Ms. Ginger King and the Technology Department will report on what the department has achieved this year.
I'm going to start.
Brenda's going to start.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we'll wait just a second.
For the technology to fire up, get the squirrels.
So, it's been another busy year for us, Raleigh Public Schools. Here we are wrapping up another year moving forward. It's hard to believe we're at the end of 2016. But our two main emphasis this year have been on implementing Chromebooks in the classroom and Google Apps and kind of restructuring our professional development. So, just a recap of what our professional development plan started to look like this year. We still have, we had an I-teach group which is our, you know, our beta testing, our teachers that serve as leaders and role models in their buildings, a Focus 2016 and a Focus 1 and our new teachers. But remember what we changed this year is that all of our teachers had either release time with us or they worked with us during their CSD, our PD days, from our librarians to our kindergarten teachers to counselors. Everyone had different times that they met with us. So, if you look on this chart, it really shows you what our training sessions looked like and how many hours our teachers achieved, which I think is vital to our movement forward. So, we used to have a minimum of three hours. Hardly any of our teachers had that. I actually don't think anyone did. But I think that breaks down the commitment of our teachers now to technology from where we have been in the past. Our number of training offerings have been, many of them have been Google-related this year. Remember, this was the first year that our students had Google accounts. And you'll hear from a student here in a little while about how she's implemented Google in the classroom. But that has been huge for us. And I always like to recognize that I couldn't, all of us are a team, Jeannie, Christopher and I, working together with our teachers, making our students successful. So, this is a reflection of our annual teacher survey that we just recently submitted out to everyone. Just some comments for you to read about the implementation. I think, you know, still overall, we have really positive feedback. Invaluable, you know, what is invaluable anymore is teachers having access to devices. We've heard that for years and years and years, and we're trying to make progress with that because now it just, in 2016, here, it just seems like that's where we need to be. And we give teachers devices, they are using it, the kids are implementing it, the kids know different. So, this has led to, looking at our survey from this year has led us to talk with administrators, to talk among ourselves, to reflect on what our teachers view as needs and changes that we need to make. So, we are just slightly remodeling our PD for next year. So, to give you a heads up on that, we will still have the I-teach team. This will focus on grades three through 12. We have a total of 34 teachers that will meet two half-days this summer back to school, and then they'll meet throughout the school year with expectations, you know, that they are fully utilizing technology in their classroom. The Focus 2017 group are teachers that were either new to the school district this year or that were in Focus 1 this year. And then next year, we're changing our Focus 1 team will actually be our new teachers. There is so much technology on our, throughout our school district that when we get new teachers here, they are ready to go and use it, and it's hard for us to hold them back. And so, we just need to keep supporting them with a little bit more training without being overwhelming to them. And so, then we'll still have our grade level and subject area trainings with half-day release days for tech training and then the other half for curriculum-based training, and that will be for all grade levels. But, you know, what we are seeing, we used to have, you know, our Focus teams were mainly just skill-based. But now what they're becoming is people want to be able to collaborate together. You know, they've got the skills. We made huge jumps in the last two years of everybody knowing how to use technology. And the kids are kind of forcing teachers to know how to do it because they're learning it. And so, now it's a matter of us implementing it with more lesson designs as we go into next year, not just so much skill-based, but now let's do, and how can we get our biggest bang for our buck on, for education for these kids. So, it's going to be an exciting year ahead of us again. Okay, so just a couple little student reflections before you hear, you're going to hear just a little bit from me today, and I'm going to turn it over in just a minute. Nancy, if you want to play on the right. So, on the left, I wanted my seniors to first of all just reflect on, you know, since their last four years, how they've done, how technology has changed for them. And then I had our eighth graders, this is just a short little clip of our eighth graders and their reflection on Google. It's just kind of fun for them. They were all able to collaborate through Google Classroom, on one Google Slide presentation, watch each other, you know, the whole Google world. And as I was thinking about these eighth graders and compared to our seniors, our eighth graders probably will know no different. They, they will grow up now with the generation of automatic saving, collaborating. What do you mean I have to take a device home with me? What do you mean I have to stick something in a computer and take it with me? I guarantee when you talk to them as seniors, they will just, they will not even know a different world. That's the way it's always been for them. And so, you know, for those of us who have watched the changes, we understand. I look at those, their little faces and I go, yeah, that's all they're going to know compared to, you know, our seniors where, you know, it's been a little bit more of a transition for them. But I think, you know, all of them, and Alex is here to kind of, right, it's just, that's the way we should do it, you know. It's awesome. So, I'm going to turn it over for a minute to my, the third grade teachers. Laura Hounsum and Crystal Thompson are here with us. They have both been part of I-teach this year. They were one of our first group of teachers to get a Chromebook. So, they have shared a Chromebook cart throughout this year, and I kind of want them to give you a little reflection on what they've done.
Hi. Beginning this year, we had a Chromebook cart replace our classroom computers that we each had. And this allowed us to go from two-to-one with technology to one-to-one with technology in our classroom. And we feel that as third grade teachers, our job is to teach the basic skills so that they can have that strong foundation, so they can use the technology for actually learning when they're in the older grades to build upon. Because most of them coming into third grade have only really used technology for playing or only used iPads. So, we want to really give them that strong foundation to use when they're in the older grades so that the older teachers are not teaching, having to teach how to use the technology. Laura will tell you how we've actually utilized the Chromebooks within our classrooms.
There's just kind of a little snippet of different things that we've done. We started the year with what we called Chromebook Boot Camp, which was basically login boot camp, which for third graders to log in with the login they have to do is unbelievable. So, we spent a week just logging in, logging out. So, we have done anything from, we've done lots of Google. We've done Google Slides, Google Classroom, Google Sites. We've done all of the Google. We'd use it for interactive review, games, multiplication review, anything like that. Another great thing we've been able to do is our online test weekly, which helped them greatly when it came to map testing in the spring, being used to reading passages online, manipulating things online. Our kiddos were just like boom, boom, boom. It didn't affect them at all. They had no trouble with the technology, anything like that. And just kind of looking back, like I said, I don't think you understand. I know I went home to Craig one day. I'm like, oh, my gosh, all my kids logged in in under three minutes. And he's like, really? I'm like, you don't understand to right now, I did.
Oh, it's because it takes him five minutes.
Well, you don't understand. That is a huge, huge thing to now this week. Crystal and I are partnering, partnering with our class. They got to choose their topic. They are completely researching, making a Google Slide presentation, pulling in videos, pulling in pictures, completely on their own. They know how to save to their drive. They know how to find their things. They shared with their partner so that if they're part, they're not there, their partner can work on it. I mean, the growth they've made is amazing in the years. So, I hope through fourth grade and by the time they get to high school, we've set that foundation for them. And then I did ask my kiddos about technology. If you'll click on the little blue Chromebooks, this is just what one of my kiddos said about technology in our classroom.
I think that technology is great in our classroom because it helps us find things that we can't find in our books. And it helps teach us for when we're older and we have to use computers and all that. It also helps with us working and it's a good reward for kids.
Don't mind the noise in the background as I was out videotaping him.
We're appreciating your shirt.
Yeah. We've loved having the Chromebook cart. Ms. Thompson's a little upset because she goes to fourth grade, the Chromebooks stay in third grade. So, she's not too happy with that. But we've loved having the opportunity to use that, and that's kind of our experience. So, we want to hear from a student, Ms. Micah Wells. I think you are next.
So, what is poison dart frog? I've got to ask.
It was an animal research report. It was a.
Oh, poison dart, poison frogs. Okay. I thought it was like Kafudi or something like that. Like Kafudi, I didn't know.
Okay. Hi, I'm Micah Wells, and I'm a ninth grader at Raleigh Junior High School. I've been using Chromebooks since the first day of school as long, as well as other Google technology, such as Google Drive and Classroom. I walked into Mrs. Heimball's third hour class and I noticed a laptop cart, but these weren't laptops, they were Chromebooks. I personally, I love Chromebooks. They're super efficient, take no time to turn on, and even my grandmother could figure out how to use them. Laptops take forever to power on. Chromebooks, on the other hand, take a matter of seconds. You just pop open the computer and bam, you're ready to log on and work. They're lightweight, and even just the design is appealing to the eye, more so than a laptop. We also use Google Classroom every day. Five of my seven teachers use Classroom, which I think is great. When you use Classroom, your work is automatically organized for you, which is great for some kids. There's no mess of spending 10 minutes digging through a folder to find an assignment due. With Classroom, my teachers simply post the assignment and I'm free to work on it as I please. I can go at my own pace, and during a project, my teacher can check my progress whenever she needs to. For example, when my English class was doing their research unit, I would simply raise my hand and ask Mrs. Heimball to check my assignment. She could use her Google account to get direct access to my documents, and she could comment as she pleased. Honestly, Google Classroom saves a lot of time. Instead of us having to sit down and edit a document, having to wait for my teachers' comments and suggestions, she could do it at home on a computer so I could simply read and edit away to a better grade. This saves time, this saves time for me and her, and the fact that it's on a computer makes it way easier to edit all my mistakes. Another convenience of Google Apps is, in general, is the fact that they're on the internet. I play volleyball and basketball, so I've spent a lot of nights crammed in a bus seat, holding my phone flashlight up, book propped up on my lap, scribbling answers, and all with two hands. When, with my work online, I can just pull up the app on my phone and work away as I please. Another, oh, sorry. Yeah, another advantage of Google that I and my classmates are very grateful for is the deadlines in Google. See, in Mrs. Heimball's class, since we use Google, if she says a paper is due on Wednesday, I have until 11:59 PM that night to turn it in, as opposed to having to turn it in the next day or that day in class. Sometimes I need the extra hours to edit my paper or cram to write it because I procrastinated. In my other classes, I have to turn it in time for the hour, which again usually doesn't prove to be a problem, but sometimes I need the extra time. Google is also great because being a ninth grade student, I know directions can be a bit tricky for us. Instead of the teacher having to speak her instructions again and again or assigning a document to each one of us, she can share the document to all of us students so we can use it as a reference. Sharing is when you make a document available to only the people you choose. In Mrs. Heimball's case, she shared it to just us students. You could log on, click on the paper, and the sharees can type freely to edit, give suggestions, that sort of thing. We use sharing to share resources, articles, and sometimes my friends and I even share our stories and documents simply for a fresh perspective. This way, I don't have to email the document or pull up the assignment for my editors. They can just log on and read away. We also use sharing during our Romeo and Juliet unit. Mrs. Heimball made an assortment of fun activities and assignments for us to complete, and by sharing her documents, I found instructions, helpful websites, and examples for me to follow. We could be more independent with our homework, which I think is a much-needed skill for our future educational, educational years. Another big assignment we had almost every week was Article of the Week. Now, with Article of the Week, there's this great feature that lets me annotate the documents. I could highlight the given text and create a comment about the author, the context, or simply my opinion. Now, normally, Mrs. Heimball would assign us an article. We'd click on it, and there'd be instructions to say 10 annotations and answer the following questions. That's another thing. I love to write. Ask Mrs. Heimball. Google Drive is great for that. I can write the stories in my imagination as I please, anywhere and anytime I want, as long as I have internet access. Sometimes this proves to be hard, but living in today's world, you can get 4G or Wi-Fi or any sort of that kind of thing. This way, I don't have to lug a notebook around. I personally prefer to, prefer to write on laptops or Chromebooks because my hand can only write so fast without getting a cramp. And sometimes I need to get all my words and ideas out of my head before I explode. I can save all my stories to my drive and work at them at my own pace. Also for creativity, Google has lots of cool programs. When we made PowerPoints, we used the program Pick Monkey. In this app, you choose a photo that you like, and you can edit it as much as your imagination allows you. You can make cool font captions, add filters, that sort of thing. Another program is Easybib, which organizes your sources into bibliography. Speaking from experience, this app saves a ton of time and has saved me in numerous situations. Honestly, since I've used Classroom so much, I don't remember a whole lot of life before it, like MyBigCampus. I do remember with MyBigCampus, it was really unorganized with a flowing stream of discussion and random assignments and comments from other students popping up when you first logged on. I remember if you were in a group and another member commented to the group, then it notified you. Well, being the reader I am, I was in the middle school library group. Now, this group has like 100 members. Every time I went out, I remember seeing notifications from this group, like when a random student reviewed a book. I would honestly get frustrated because this was clogging up my feed, and I would literally have to search a teacher's name or class to get the important stuff like assignments. After using Google Drive and Chromebooks this year, taking quizzes, doing assignments, even tests online, I would say I quite enjoy it. I wouldn't even mind if there were textbooks online. It would save trees, and I wouldn't have to lug 50-pound books around everywhere. I think it would be super cool if every high school student got their own Chromebook to take home and work on because while I'm blessed to have my own laptop at home, many students don't. If you don't have a laptop, Google can be a, be a pain because you can only work on assignments at school. In conclusion, as a ninth grader, I've learned the many advantages of Google, and I hope in the future we continue to use it. It's proved to make my life more, less stressful just by being organized and efficient. I'm grateful I got to use it this year and for being in a one-on-one classroom. I appreciate you for letting me speak to you all and for bearing with me. Thank you.
Now the owner of a new four-wheeler.
Well, it was just luck. Thank you, Micah, for talking with us tonight. I know that there's a band concert going on tonight. And thank you so much. I know you're heading out to that. And thank you, Crystal and Laura, too. I know she mentioned MyBigCampus, and a few years ago, you know, we talked about that all the time. And there was a little bit of panic that set in when they told us that they would be doing away with that. But due to the leadership of Christopher, Jeannie and Brenda, I think our teachers are becoming a lot more accustomed to Google, Classroom especially, and that has really taken the role of MyBigCampus, and the panic has settled down. But it was there for a while. We were very worried. We had lots of, lots of time and research and resources, I guess, devoted to MyBigCampus. But I'm glad that this free resource has worked out even better for us. There's still a few things that we need to work out, online assessments, just daily quizzes, things like that we need to work out. But for the most part, Google has become the new phrase that you'll hear, everything Google.
Thinkin' over the world.
Say that quite a bit. So, here's the, some, a few nerdy little stats. There is, you can tell in one year, this is about 1.6 terabyte worth of storage that you can see the number of files that we've uploaded in one year. Prior to this year, we had zero Chromebooks in the district, and we have implemented or installed about almost 500 of them. We have just shy of 500. And we've got them from, like Mrs. Hounsum and Mrs. Thompson said, in third grade on up through the high school. We've kind of spread them out. But we were very thankful, when I went to Laura and Crystal last year and asked them if they would be willing to pilot that in third grade, you know, their experience had been iPads. And they were a little, little nervous about, you know, how can we, and rightly so, getting them logged in. They, there were some challenges to that in the beginning, and I appreciate them bearing with us through that because we'll get to the next slide. We are, let's jump ahead real quick. We are third grade district-wide. Every third grade teacher next year will have a Google Chrome Cart devoted to their classroom. And so, the pilot that Mark Twain third grade teachers did for us, and it was a success, we have decided to implement that in every third grade classroom. And we will take advantage of the release days where they're all together to make sure that they are, these guys can help mentor other third grade teachers. Well, Crystal, you're moving on, sorry. We'll miss you there and your, your leadership. But it'll be great to have that time for them to work together with a common focus of having those carts because they will have gone through, they'll be going through exactly what these guys went through this year. So, it will be that, I think, the challenge of getting them logged in unfortunately is one of the big ones. But I think switching from iPads to the Chromebook was, there's benefits of both still, we know that. But management-wise, we, I would like to get rid of every iPad in the district if we could today. So, they are, there is no comparison to the management of them. On a management side, there are still great uses in our district for them. And we are, in our special ed departments and at the elementary level, they are fantastic devices. But we are seeing Google taking over in the world. Thank you, Tony, the world. It is, they are great devices. They run about anywhere from $250 to $300 apiece. They are affordable. They, the work orders that are coming in are maybe because keys get popped off. That's about it. Daily, we get multiple iPad work orders coming in. So, the ease of use on these devices is amazing. And they, again, they are pretty affordable as well. We, you can see the shift a little bit from 15 to what we are proposing for 16. And you can see down there at the bottom, the, some of the iPad carts will, will go out of circulation just due to the age of them. They will be four years old. The batteries are starting to die. Updates are taking longer. Storage is an issue on them. And as we move forward, you can see that we, the Chrome Cart numbers are definitely going up, as well as laptop numbers are going down. There is no time, like Micah mentioned, not only the boot up, you know, the startup time, but even updates are almost instantaneous. I remember in our office upstairs, Rob and I did all 460 devices. We pushed out in 30 minutes the ability for all of those devices to test on, whether it be map or EOC testing. We pushed it out in 30 minutes, and we sat there and looked at each other and thought, well, something else, something has to be missing because there's usually not an easy button. But that was, that was, that was amazing that we were able to, all 460 devices within 30 minutes of us reading the instructions and getting it pushed out. It was, and then the devices worked great for testing as well. We had very few issues. Most of them were wireless issues, which we resolved as well. But as far as the device goes, not a lot of issues with those. We do not test on iPads because of the scrolling and just no keyboards. So, there's another Chrome benefit. Go back to this slide real quick. In January, when we came and spoke with you, someone mentioned how are, how do we get that information? Because, you know, as we just showed you, where is it at? There's a lot of documents being stored in the cloud. And someone mentioned, how do we get that, how do students and our teachers who are leaving, how do we get that information out? Well, Google, being Google, created Google Takeout. And we have distributed information. I think Brenda did a screencast on Google Takeout and the simplicity of it. And it's just a little process that Google has put together, and you literally move it from, you export it out and you move it to your own personal account. There's no more kind of the copying and all that kind of things where things can get lost. They simplified that process as well. So, just to be on the record, we want to make sure if anybody is watching this, that we'll, we'll let our students know as well. But seniors and students who are leaving will need them to have their information off our system by May 31st. And then teachers and staff who are leaving or retiring will want to have them, unless they make other arrangements, will have them.
I think it's been in the high school announcements, hasn't it?
Should be. Should have been in the announcements if.
Those who don't hear them.
Right. We hear that a lot. I didn't hear that. Yeah.
Other teachers have been told to.
Okay, good.
Especially those teachers that have seniors.
Yeah. So, we're trying to get the word out, and, you know, we, it'll, it's a pretty easy process with Google Takeout. It really is. They, before last year, it was a little clunky. You know, we were kind of trying to figure it out ourselves. This has definitely simplified that process. All things Google. And then looking ahead, I know it seems like every time I come to talk to you, we talk about bandwidth, and that is always a constant struggle. We will, we have upgraded this year again, and we are at like a 300 meg connection. But with the addition of more Chromebooks and just resources going to the cloud, bandwidth is always an issue. So, we will need to, we always, we constantly monitor that and make sure that we have adequate resources. In 2012, for those of you who were here, most of you were, we did a major, with the technology plan, we did a major infrastructure upgrade, or we put it, some of it we literally put in place. Wireless, we put in place, things like that. Well, technology doesn't stay stagnant for long, and we are looking at upgrading that infrastructure again. However, I believe you all accepted a bid proposal for me for some E-Rate consulting. We talked a little bit about E-Rate that night. E-Rate is a reimbursement based on our free and reduced lunch count. Of this $304,000 project, depending on the firewall reimburse is at 60%, the rest of those reimburse at 80%. So, the majority of that will be reimbursed back to us. It is amazing. This, they call it Category 2. Category 2 just became available last year. None, when we did this in 2012, those funds were not available to us because our free and reduced lunch numbers were not high enough. Since then, the USAC, the Universal School, they redid all of that. And now we have, it's through the FCC as well, we, the funding comes, if you look at your telephone bill, there'll be a universal charge, and that's where the funding comes from. So, schools and libraries have access to this, and now we are fortunate enough to have Category 2 funding, and we have applied for that and fully expect to receive reimbursement on those items that are for next year. We will, usually don't find out if you have funding until the fall. So, we will start putting those items in place. Access control, that is, I brought visual aids and I left them lay over there. The, have little card passes where you actually don't have to give keys anymore. I think that we're looking at for our facility usage, you can literally give someone a badge. It expires. If it's sir or whatever, they can get in on certain days. They can't get in on the weekends. It expires. We don't have to worry about giving out physical keys as much. Could be something that we look at putting on two to three exterior doors throughout at each building. And then, you know, we could look at it for faculty and staff as well, that they have to the exterior of the building. They just have a badge that gets them in. It expires. It's lost. They let us know. We cancel it. It's not like re-coring the entire building if someone loses a key. So, it gives us a little bit more control of that security-wise, and it's just something that we're looking into. Distributed IPTV is, if any of you have local fidelity at home, you know that you now have to have the little box. Well, every room in our district has access to cable, and getting one of those little boxes is not possible. They're, they're expensive. So, we're looking at a way to distribute some of the educational channels through, through the network, actually. Digital signage, there's a little picture. What I meant by that is you'll have digital displays in the fronts of every buildings and the cafeterias, and we'll be able to push out menus, announcements, kind of a really nice PR. It also allows us to have a video camera in maybe, say, the gym, and you can stream live through basketball games, whatever, volleyball, whatever we want to stream live. We have the ability to do that through this software, the server that's attached. And then obviously, you know, we're looking forward to the, the high school addition and the construction there and what we'll need to put in place, which is also even better, E-Rate reimbursable too at 80%. So, all the cabling that's going in there. So all the cabling that's going in there, all of the things that we will need, the wireless access points, everything like that is all 80% reimbursable. So that is a significant amount of money that we will get reimbursed back to us. That's, that's next year.
Definitely.
That's next year and this summer. So those are our plans and like Brenda mentioned, we're just going to continue moving forward. I think getting, we are looking at putting in, you know, those additional, almost 30 more carts. I think I'm excited about every third-grade teacher having access to a cart, just to see where that, what that blossoms into. I think it'll be fantastic. So that is in a nutshell, kind of where we're going, where we've been and where we've, where we're headed.
Thanks, Mrs. King. Any questions from the board and comments?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.